All right, I'd like to call the City of Wheat Ridge Planning Commission meeting for June 21st to order. Can I get a roll call of the members, please?
Ellen Bucknam.
Present.
Emery Dorsey.
Here.
Daniel Larson.
Present.
Janet Leo.
Here.
Richard Peterson.
Here.
Vivian Voss.
Present.
Scott Ohm and Amanda Weaver are absent tonight.
Thank you. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the order of the agenda.
Very well, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? All right. Hearing none, can I call for a vote?
Motion passed six to zero.
All right, let's see. Next up on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for June 7th. Can I get, can I get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 7th.
Second.
Second, okay. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Yes, Commissioner Voss?
Yes, I have two corrections. The first page called meeting to order, the chair was listed as Ohm and it should be Bucknam. And then page eight were additional comments by Commissioner Voss about the last half of the page. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Just to summarize, in case you didn't hear that, Commissioner Voss had two corrections. One on page one regarding the naming of the chair and on page eight, more comments by Commissioner Voss on the bottom half of the page, correct? All right. We'll get those corrected. With those corrections, could I call for a vote on approval of the minutes, please?
Motion passed five to zero with one abstaining.
Okay. Next up is the public forum. This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. If you're here to speak about a case on the agenda tonight, you'll have that opportunity. But has anybody signed up to speak?
No.
Okay. Anyone who didn't sign up who wants to speak? All right, seeing none, we will conclude the public forum. Let's see. I'm going to open up public hearing for case number WZ-18-10. This is an application filed by U.S. Retail Partners LLC for approval of a specific development plan for a restaurant for property located at 3298 Youngfield. Can I have the staff report, please?
Give the projector some time to warm up. All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Scott Cutler. I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. We're here tonight to hear case number WZ-1810, which is a request for approval of a specific development plan at Applewood Village Shopping Center, allowing for new restaurant building. I'd like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge and all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met. Therefore, the Planning Commission has jurisdiction to hear the case. Subject properties are outlined in red in the middle of the screen. They're located in the southwest area of the Applewood Village Shopping Center with Youngfield Street and I-70 to the west and 32nd Avenue to the south. And the area of work on this project is outlined in black. Zoning in the area, the Applewood Village Shopping Center is zoned planned commercial development and it was consolidated into one planned development in 2014 with an outlined development plan. Surrounding area is almost entirely commercial with additional commercial zoning located south of West 32nd Avenue before transitioning to residential to the east. So what is being heard today is essentially step two in the planned development process as the ODP for the entire shopping center has already been approved. In order to be approved, the SDP must be found and complienced with the approved ODP as well as other city codes and policies. And major amendments and new buildings require Planning Commission approval. So the Planning Commission is the final deciding body for this SDP. Existing conditions on the site. Site is currently vacant, although a little more less recently, it was home to the Wells Fargo drive-through. This is a view looking east from the sidewalk on Youngfield Street. This is a view of the site looking south from the Northern Access Drive and the sidewalk will be detached and widened as part of this project. This is a view looking north of Youngfield Street from the existing entrance at the Chili's and this entrance will remain but will shift slightly south as part of this project. And then one more. This is a view looking southeast from Youngfield Street. Chili's is behind the tree on the right and the existing parking lot will remain but it will be reconfigured as part of the project and landscaping will be added. There are a lot of pages which will be hard to see on the screen, but you have hard copies in your packet. The SDP consists of 10 pages and I'll touch on the major elements now. The front page is a vicinity map, signature blocks, and approval lines as well as a statement of the character of development. Page two is an overall site plan with a zoomed out utilities view and it also contains the site data table, which goes into parking, landscaping, open space, things like that. Page three is the detailed site plan, which shows the restaurant footprint, reconfiguration of the parking lot to the south, as well as the entrance drive modifications. And this slide is a much more zoomed in view, which actually shows the access modifications that are proposed for Youngfield Street. So as part of this project, two of the existing four entrances are going to be closed and the northern access, which is currently about 45 feet wide, will actually be narrowed to 35 feet and become a right-in, right-out entrance. Then two entrances are closed, kind of where the restaurant is, and then the southern entrance will be converted into a three-quarter movement, which would allow vehicles to turn left into development but not out. These were at the recommendation of the Public Works Department as far as safety and actual vehicle turning motions go. And you can see there's an eight-foot detached sidewalk with a landscaping strip opposed along the entire length of the project. Page four, improvements installed on private property, including the curb and gutter, bollards, ramps, directional signage, and bicycle racks. Page five is the photometric plan. Pedestrian and street lights will be added along Youngfield for this project and lights will also be upgraded in the parking lot and obviously on the new restaurant. Page six contains the landscape plan. Street trees will be added along Youngfield Street and the northern access drive. Trees and shrubs will be placed in new landscape islands in the parking lot and many trees, shrubs, and rock gardens will surround the building. And these are going to be hard to read, but it's basically all of the landscape lists and then the tree planting requirements. Last, or second-to-last page are the elevations of the restaurant. The architecture has been designed to integrate the corporate designs with the city's requirements in the Architectural and Site Design Manual and a color rendering will be shown in just a minute. This is page 10 of the SDP. The building will have large garage-style windows facing Youngfield Street and the northern drive and it'll be a two-story building. So these renderings give you a better idea of what's going on. The building will be wrapped with hard-coated stucco, decorative tile work at the primary entrance. The back of the house portion of the building will be brick with a decorative mountain range on one side. And this is another view, kind of facing Youngfield Street and that northern drive with the large windows wrapping the building frontage and a mezzanine on the second level. So the process. As I said earlier, the outlined development plan for Applewood was approved in 2014. There was a Planning Commission hearing required for amendments and major SDPs, including new buildings. We sent, since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application out in referral to outside agencies and completed internal review. I noted in the staff report, there were some fire district concerns regarding access, but by the time of this presentation, those concerns have been resolved. And Public Works is continuing to review the remaining civil construction drawings. Before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days. Letters were sent to surrounding property owners and we did not receive any phone calls or letters from any surrounding residents or property owners. So ultimately, staff has concluded the request meets the planned development regulations in the city code, is consistent with the goals and policies of the city's guiding documents, including the Architectural and Site Design Manual, and it is consistent with the approved ODP for Applewood. For all those reasons, staff recommends approval of the request and I'd be happy to answer questions and the applicant is also here if you'd like to ask them questions. Thanks.
Great, thank you for that presentation. Let's take questions from the commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner Leo. Commissioner Voss, do you have any questions?
I have one as to who is maintaining all of the surrounding landscaping, trees, bushes?
It would be on the private property, so it'd be part of the Regency Centers.
Even the what's going on on Youngfield, the five trees on Youngfield?
Yeah, so any landscaping in the city right-of-way is still the property owner's responsibility.
Thank you, that's all.
Commissioner Larson?
The drawings show that the Chili's building is, excuse me, is within the lot, is that correct?
Let's go back because of... Yes, so it is on that 3244 Youngfield parcel. Actually, this will be more helpful. But it is, I mean, it's not, nothing's changing on that part of the property.
And that would share the zoning with this?
Yes, so it's all under the same planned development for the entire shopping center.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dorsey, any questions? Commissioner Peterson?
Yeah, I don't have any comments. I'm just going to be very happy to see trees along there. I go through that 32nd Avenue and Youngfield Street intersection, if it can be called that. It's quite a zoo and it's gray and so I welcome any kind of landscaping that can break that up a little bit.
I've just got one question for staff. Just looking at the SDP, I don't know what sheet this is. This is just kind of the, the overall plan showing the improvements. As far as improvements in bicycle access along Youngfield, could you maybe talk a little bit about what the overall bike ped master plan says about bike access on Youngfield and how the improved or widened footpath access might, might play into that regarding cyclists and pedestrians?
I may defer to Steve Nguyen, our engineering manager on this one, but the requirement, I think currently there's a substandard about four-foot sidewalk. So having an eight-foot detached sidewalk will be huge in terms of pedestrian safety. There are, there is a requirement for bicycle parking on this property. I know Youngfield does not have bike facilities, but I think it is definitely an improvement.
As far as bike improvement, to improve that in a quarter would probably take a longer segment as a project to carry that through. But certainly like Scott mentioned, from a pedestrian perspective, the sidewalk is being widened not only to improve the pedestrian but also to meet the 88 requirement. But back to the bike, it would require a longer segment to make a meaningful project.
Okay. Yeah, I just saw that this is sort of a significant length on Youngfield and I know that Regency is, you know, gradually sort of redeveloping the interior of the property. So I just wanted to get some context on how bike ped access along Youngfield kind of plays into that overall plan. All right, thank you. All right, any further questions for staff? Okay, great, thanks. Let's hear from the applicant. If the applicant would like to make a presentation or make themselves available for questions, you can come on up. If you could just state your name and address for us, that'd be great.
Good evening, my name's Thomas Metzger. I'm with Regency Centers, 8480 East Orchard Road in Greenwood Village. I'm available for questions. I don't have anything to add. Scott did a nice job on the presentation.
Great, okay. Well, we'll see if we have some questions. Commissioner Peterson, do you have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Commissioner Dorsey? All right, Commissioner Larson?
Just real quick, the power poles that we see in the photos, will they stay?
That's not the plan. We're working with the city and Excel Energy on a project to bury the power lines.
Thank you.
Commissioner Voss?
Well, now that you bring that up, could we go back to that slide on the lighting, on the lighting?
The photometric plan?
Sure. What's designating the lighting? I'm not catching that. Your little, your squares?
Yeah, so there's a bunch of letters along kind of the bottom where Youngfield Street is, so the different symbols and letters represent the different types of lights. So there'll be ped lights as well as street lighting. And they're, they're also indicated on the site plan kind of as, I think, just circles. But this is, this will show you the exact specs of each light and height and things like that.
So the four across the eastern edge and then one there?
Yeah, so we'll have some interior parking lot lights and those will be new LED fixtures. And then we're putting in city pedestrian lights and city street lights. So Youngfield will have more light on the street and then the sidewalk will have the pedestrian lights lighting it. And those will be the new city standards where you see along 32nd, the pedestrian poles are maybe eight feet tall and black, nice-looking. Those same type of things will be here.
Up-to-date technology?
We're putting in the city's lights. I can't speak for those. Those are specified by the city, but ours will be up-to-date LED fixtures in the parking lots.
Can the city speak to that when they get a chance as to updated lighting?
Yeah, so the lights on the plan indicate that there'll be LED.
Thank you.
Commissioner Leo, questions for the applicant? Okay. Let's see, I don't think I have any other questions for you, so thanks. Okay, all right. All right, now it's time for the citizens forum. Do we have any citizens signed up to speak? Okay. No citizens are signed up, but if there is anyone in the audience who would like to either make a comment or ask questions of the commission that we can then get, strive to get some answers for, is anybody interested in speaking? Okay. Seeing there are no citizens signed up to speak, I'll close the citizens forum. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to recommend approval of case number WZ-1810, a request for approval of an amendment to a specific development plan for property located at 3244 and 3298 Youngfield Street for the following reasons. One, the proposal is consistent with the city's guiding documents, including the I-70 Kipling Urban Renewal Plan. Two, the proposed SDP is consistent with the approved ODP document and the Architectural and Site Design Manual. Number three, the criteria used to evaluate an SDP have been met with the following conditions. One, the applicant shall continue working with utility and service providers, including the fire district, to meet all applicable requirements.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I just wanted to mention, just to ask staff, Zach, the, I'm sorry, Scott, the, uh, stuff that West Metro Fire was concerned with as far as this, that that condition was put in there for in the staff report, is that the, the concerns that you said had been addressed already?
Yeah, so the, the fire district comments have been kind of resolved at this point. There are still some minor outstanding public works comments, but not anything of significance that would change the plan. It would be just minor civil changes.
Okay, so I think as long as we can leave that condition in and that'll just ensure that everything gets taken care of. All right.
Thank you.
Great, if there's no other discussion, I'll call for a vote.
Motion passed six to zero.
All right, thank you. Next up is the public hearing for case number WZ-1812. This is an application filed by Copper Forest LLC for approval of a zone change from neighborhood commercial to mixed-use neighborhood for property located at 4288 Youngfield. Let's hear from the staff for the report.
All righty, good evening. For the record, Zach Wallace Mendez, I'm a planner with the Community Development Department. Tonight I'm presenting case number WZ-1812, request for approval of a zone change from neighborhood commercial to mixed-use neighborhood on property located at 4288 Youngfield. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation.
So entered.
The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met and therefore the Planning Commission does have jurisdiction to hear the case. As always, we will start with an aerial overview to orient everyone. The property is outlined here in red in this 2016 aerial. As you can see, the existing log cabin, it was originally built as a model home, is situated kind of closer to Youngfield with the eastern portion of the property remaining somewhat vacant. I-70, or the I-70, Highway 58 interchange is located directly to the west of the subject property and then the Clear Creek, Clear Creek Green Belt, excuse me, is located to the south. Zoning in the area, the property is owned neighborhood commercial. The property to the south is owned commercial one. It's currently occupied by an irrigation supply company, which operates under a special use permit. The properties to the east are zoned restricted commercial and that's the Jefferson County Head Start School and then a specialty retailer further to the west. To the northeast, or I'm sorry, to the east. And then to the northeast is zoned agricultural two. This is largely single-family homes. There's also two dog kennels in this area that operate under special use permits. And then the remainder of the area in this light green is zoned agricultural one. So the highways are zoned agricultural one, the green belt, as well as some of these properties to the south of 42nd Avenue. You may remember this area about two weeks ago or maybe, maybe about a month ago or so, you heard a rezoning request for this property right here. That is still under consideration by city council or still needs to go back to city council. It went, I believe, last Monday, I want to say, and it was continued. So that, that, the news case is still pending for the planned commercial development. Just a few quick photos, this is a view of, of the property looking northeast from the 42nd and Youngfield Interchange, or not interchange, but intersection, excuse me. So you can see the parking lot here, the business signage, there are offices within the log cabin house now. It served as a model home for several years and then when the current owner purchased the property, I believe in 2015, she converted it into several small office suites for small businesses. This is a view from Youngfield looking east along 42nd Avenue, so you can kind of see the street frontage there as well as the access point. This is the only access point into the property. And then this is a view looking north from Youngfield, or along Youngfield from 42nd Avenue. I believe all of this area is actually right-of-way and I believe it's actually C dot right-of-way, not the city's right-of-way. And then the property line begins somewhere along where the, the rocks are. At this point in time, the applicant is not proposing any new development. However, as we always do, we present you with the development standards if redevelopment were to ever occur and compare those to the current development standards. We'll start with the uses. In the, the mixed-use neighborhood, the proposed mixed-use neighborhood, it does allow residential uses as well as neighborhood-scale commercial uses, as well as a mix of the two. The current zoning allows for neighborhood-scale commercial uses. It has very limited residential uses and they have to be, there's a list of criteria that need to be fulfilled in order for those to be allowed on a site and they're, they're pretty restrictive. Architecture for, for any new development is pretty similar, although they are governed by two different documents. For the mixed-use neighborhood, that is governed by the mixed-use code. And then for the neighborhood commercial, it does lay within one of our Architectural and Site Design Manual overlay districts. So it does have heightened architectural standards as well that, that are pretty comparable to the mixed-use neighborhood. Building heights are somewhat similar. Any residential uses are limited to 35 feet in the mixed-use neighborhood, but there is an allowance for up to 50 feet if it's a purely commercial structure. The neighborhood commercial is a little bit more low-scaled than that and only permits any structures up to 35 feet. Similar build-twos along the, the street frontages with the, the current neighborhood commercial being slightly more setback and not so, not so street presence-heavy. Setbacks are fairly similar. The, the current standards are very much based on the per-story, whereas the setbacks in our mixed-use neighborhood are not. And then lot coverage is again somewhat similar, as is landscaping. There is a little bit of an incentive for folks to do mixed-use, a true mixed-use development, you know, residential and commercial with... you know, residential and commercial, with lessening the, the landscape coverage required. There was a neighborhood meeting held on May 2nd and three neighbors attended. There are summary notes in your, your packet, but just briefly, some concerns raised were proximity to the Head Start School because the applicant is proposing to run a beer and wine bar from this property if it is rezoned. And then there was concerns about traffic as well in this area. While the property was posted for this public hearing, staff did not receive any additional calls or emails or letters. During the referral period, as you can imagine, the Jefferson County Head Start submitted a letter concerned about the, the proposed bar use that would be allowed under the mixed-use neighborhood. Tammy has the letter from the Jefferson County Head Start. So there's one for each of you. Do you want me to give you a moment to read that now or maybe at the end? Just pause for a second and?
We'll, we'll take, we'll take a moment after presentation to read it.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, did you say at the end of the presentation?
Yeah.
Okay. Apologies. So other than the Jefferson County Head Start letter which you now have, there were no concerns from any other agencies. As the commissioners are aware, we use several criteria to evaluate zone change requests. Primary among them is the comprehensive plan. This is an excerpt from the plan. The property is located approximately here in this, this blue star. This, this orangish-brown color, it designates a neighborhood buffer. So that really intends to, to buffer lower-scale, lower-intensity uses from high-scale, high-intensity uses, as the name suggests. So staff does believe that the mixed-use neighborhood is an appropriate transition from kind of a high-intensity, high-activity corridor like Youngfield and the I-70 Highway 58 interchange to the lower-scale commercial and residential activities that occur east of the subject property along Xenon and 42nd Avenue. So staff has concluded that the request does meet the zone change criteria. The zone change is supported by the comprehensive plan and the mixed-use neighborhood zone district is compatible with the surroundings and serves as an appropriate buffer between kind of the high-intensity Youngfield-I-70-58 interchange and the lower-scale, lower-intensity single-family uses and kind of low-scale commercial uses that are found further to the east. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions and I'll also let you take a look at the letter at this point.
Okay, if you want to hold on for about a minute or so, we'll read through this letter and then we'll ask you some questions if there are any. Okay, I think we'll go ahead and take some questions from the commissioners, if there are some. Commissioner Peterson, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do. Actually, I think three. One might not be for you folks, but for the owner of the property, but you may know. Currently, there, it was, it was converted to six businesses. The application says there are now three businesses. Are those going to remain if this turns into a tap house?
I do not believe so, no.
Okay.
The applicant is here and so maybe you can ask that question again just to verify when, when she comes up to answer.
Okay, fine. My second, my second question is a little bit more serious and that has to do with a section of the code. It's section 26-1105, Building Placement and Orientation. This has a Youngfield address, but the only access is on 42nd. And the access on 42nd has caused a certain amount of concern, both in the neighborhood and in the Head Start letter that we just received. According to section 26-1105, Building Placement and Orientation, I'm just going to skip a bunch of things. This has to do with public interests, public entrances. All buildings are encouraged to have at least one public entry that faces the primary or secondary street. So Youngfield is the primary, 42nd is the secondary. Section B1, within the multi-use neighborhood sub-district, each, each building shall have at least one main public entry that faces the primary street or a public space adjacent to the building. So my, I understand that the building already exists. I understand that the entrance off 42nd already exists, but I don't quite understand why the city can't say or can't ask that an entry, an entrance off Youngfield be established and the 42nd Street entrance done away with. Seems like it solves a lot of problems and it's consistent with the code. Currently, it's not.
Sure. So Youngfield in this neck of the woods is part of C dot right-of-way, so a C dot right-of-way access permit would need to be applied for and granted. I don't know their requirements for permitting that and I can't, so can't guarantee that, you know, if that's a condition of approval that it can be met, because that decision lasts with, with C dot. They may allow a right-in, right-out. I'm not, I'm not entirely sure what C dot would or would not permit within the right-of-way.
But it seems, it seems like the, the city code creates a kind of impossible situation for anybody who wants to build along a C dot right-of-way then, doesn't it?
I would also add to that, that I believe the intent of this code is actually physical building entrance as opposed to vehicle entrance. We see a lot of cases where you can't actually get access to a C dot road and there's like a side street, but the, the building actually faces the primary street with a build, an entrance on that side of the building.
Yeah, but my, looking at the orientation of this building is it doesn't really face Youngfield and it doesn't really face 42nd. It's sitting in there at an angle.
Sure. So I, I don't remember the exact year this was built. Some, so they, back in, let's see here, 2001, the zoning was changed to the restricted commercial one zone district, which then became the neighborhood commercial zone district. And this went through a site plan approval process, so I, I believe it met the city codes at that point in time. That was now, what, 17 years ago, so I'm, I'm sure some of that has changed, including potentially what you, you are referencing now. So it may be a non-conforming structure per current city codes, but it was built to be compliant with, with the codes at that time. And to kind of answer your question about C dot right-of-way, we, we often have trouble along all of our C dot right-of-ways in determining how exactly we're going to gain access to sites when, when folks come to us and say, hey, we're thinking about doing this with our property. You know, oftentimes we say, talk to C dot first, see what kind of access you can get. We are a fan of shared access points for that reason and that may be why there is an access point off of 42nd where there's an existing access point into the, all these businesses. As you can notice, these folks to the south also don't have an entrance on Youngfield.
Right.
And I believe they are probably addressed to Youngfield as well. So I, I believe it's probably C dot hindering access to Youngfield that, that caused this configuration as opposed to, you know, an entrance here and potentially an entrance there.
But there's, from what you've said so far, there's no reason that the planning commission can't say that a condition of okaying this is that they go through the C dot process. I mean, it seems to me that even from a business perspective, a, a tap house would be far better off with a Youngfield entrance rather than a sort of convoluted 42nd Avenue entrance.
Sure. I would make, I would just make a recommendation that it's not a condition of approval that that access is there, but that they apply for the permit, because we don't want to stifle any business opportunities by removing an access point off of 42nd if they cannot gain access off of Youngfield because their permit is denied. Be my recommendation.
That's, that's a pretty low bar to just apply for it.
Well, we, we cannot force, we can, we, we have this all over the city. Kipling, Wattsworth, Sheridan are all C dot right-of-ways and we run into trouble gaining, or getting access for parcels all the time when they want to redevelop or potentially do anything. So I understand it's a low bar, but I, I also have seen how C dot works and I, I cannot, I would doubt that C dot would allow an access point off of Youngfield, although I'm not the decision-maker there, but I just, I don't want to set someone up for failure.
Right. So can, if you continue with section B1, it says for corner lots with more than one street frontage, I think this would qualify, the public entry may be oriented toward the corner. So if you, if you took the current entryway and, and sort of moved it, I don't know what direction I can say, it's west. If you moved it west, if you sort of oriented it, you can still leave it on 42nd, but move it to the corner of that lot. It seems to alleviate a lot of neighborhood concerns and the Head Start program concerns. And, and it makes it, I mean, for my building, I'd really want to have access to Youngfield and that does it.
Sure, so I wish Steve would have stayed, I didn't know that we would need him for this discussion. I guess, so my response to that would be that code section, I believe, applies to, again, the building entrance as Scott mentioned. And while the city does allow, you know, access from 42nd Avenue, bringing it closer to this Youngfield Street intersection, I believe they have certain distance requirements from existing intersections or driveways. I don't know what that exact number is, but bringing it closer would present a more dangerous situation in the eyes of the public works in, in reality, because there's too many conflicting movements happening close to that intersection.
Can I mention, I think, doesn't the Wheat Ridge code have a minimum distance from the corner for any driveways on their streets?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just don't know that specific number, but it does, yeah.
Okay.
All right, did you have any, do you have another question or was that it?
None, just unconvinced.
Okay. Commissioner Dorsey?
In reading the letter from Jefferson County Human Services, they're more or less against it, but they do go on and with item two, construction of a barrier fence that would isolate this property from the school property. If we were to approve it, I think that should be one of the items that would be included in the approval.
Sure. Yeah, so just thinking forward to next steps, if the zone change is approved and they do move forward with the, the beer-wine tap house, they will have to come through for a site plan because they will need more parking and I think they plan to put up a shed or something. So we'll need to see a site plan and that would be something.
That would be the time, okay. Very good, thank you.
Commissioner Larson?
No questions.
Okay. Commissioner Voss?
Yes. For Zach, I believe, could you define tap house as it relates to the city code and the word brewing as it relates to tap house? We've got both words in there.
Okay, so I can definitely define those. I know the applicant does not intend to brew anything at this site. It's all going to be brought on, so tap house.
Can I just interject? I think there's probably also some confusion between the term tap room and tap house, because tap room, I think, is specific, a specific term associated with a brewing operation.
Yep, so we, we only have a, a definition for tap room, which is a specific use in the, the use chart that, again, is associated with a brewery. So breweries will have a tap room where folks can try the beers and things like that. So, and that's exactly what the definition is, a use associated with and on the same presence as premises as a microbrewery, micro-distillery, or micro-winery. So the applicant is calling, I think they're calling it the Copper Forest Tap House. In the city's definition, it would be a, a bar. Be considered a bar, per, per our definitions.
But it sounded like tap room would be more conducive to the brewery part, which they don't plan to do, and so why are we calling it a tap house? That seems missed.
That's the name that the applicant chose.
Oh, that's what they've chosen for their name? Oh, okay. And then the?
I may have repeated that, I apologize.
That's okay.
Yes.
And then the, there's quite a bit of overgrowth to the east of the building with trees and bushes and all. How much of that, and maybe the applicant can speak to that, will be removed or kept?
Yeah.
And I assume it's all, all on their property?
It is, yeah.
Nothing city?
All the way back, no, yeah, so this area here, oops, maybe this. Yeah, so behind the building, all the way to the Head Start's parking lot is their property and then almost all the way up to the sidewalk along 42nd Avenue. So I would defer that question to the, to the applicant.
Commissioner Leo, any questions?
Where is the school building? Right against the red line?
This is the school building here. So this is their parking lot, this appears to be the playground and then the school right here, the school building.
I just had a couple of questions, Zach. Do we know who the landowner is directly north of the applicant, that little kind of triangular-shaped wedge?
It's C dot.
That's also, so C dot actually owns that, it's just going to remain undeveloped? Okay. All right, so likely would never get developed into anything commercial, residential, or otherwise?
Yeah.
And it's my understanding that a brewery could actually be constructed and opened and operated on this property if the zoning remains neighborhood commercial, correct? That's an allowed use?
I believe so, but I believe it needs a special use permit first, which is a, could potentially be a public hearing process. At the very least, it's an administrative review, but there's public notices that go out. Let me just verify that really quick.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
Okay, so if it falls under a special use permit application, there'd be an opportunity, if this was not rezoned, for Head Start or concerned neighbors or other people to make their voices heard at a special use permit hearing or?
Yeah, so if the, if the rezoning is denied and they decide to go for the, like a microbrewery, they would have to go through a special use permit process. And then if objections are received during that administrative posting, then it would be forwarded to city council for a public hearing.
Okay. So with the, with that kind of matrix that you showed comparing the two zoning, the current and the proposed, we've got a 80% max lot coverage for existing, up to 90% for mixed-use on a mixed-use neighborhood, 85% if it's single-use. What was I getting at here? I was just gonna, I, I think it's, well, all right, never mind. The comment I had on that just went right out of my head, so never mind. I had on that just went right out of my head. So never mind, forget about it. I'm sure it'll come back to me later. Let me just see. Oh, can you briefly remind us what the difference is between like a mixed use neighborhood zoning and the mixed use commercial? Since we're talking about neighborhood commercial zoning here, what might, why mixed use commercial would, would be less appropriate in this?
Sure, yeah. So in terms of intensity, it kind of goes neighborhood, mixed use neighborhood is kind of the less intensive zone, mixed use zone district. And then it moves up to mixed use commercial, probably mixed use interstate, and then the mixed use TOD. So while this may have been eligible, being on Youngfield is, I believe it's classified as an arterial, for the mixed use commercial and then its adjacency to I-70 and Highway 58 as potentially the mixed use commercial interstate, we felt that the mixed use neighborhood would be more appropriate. It allows for less intensive development, less intensive, slightly less intensive uses. And it's just a better transition between, for this neighborhood buffer, as it's called in the comprehensive plan, kind of serves that purpose. Whereas the mixed use commercial is more for our, you know, commercial corridors like Wadsworth between, you know, 38th and 44th or, you know, those types of designations. So it's a little bit less intensity for that transition and still allows the applicant to do what they propose. And we feel is a, a good, a good buffer.
And just thinking ahead, say the applicant decides they, they don't want to do what they're doing. Maybe they want to sell it to, after we rezone it, or, you know, maybe pursue some other use. As far as the size of this lot, how might that enable or restrict, say, multi-story residential and commercial? When we're talking about, you know, that, that 50-foot height for mixed use that might concern some residents. I know that, that has to do with kind of how much lot they have to work with?
Right. So, you know, if we're just going with the straight area, it's about 1.38 acres. So our maximum is 21 units per acre. So I can't do that math, but like 23, 25 units on that site, maybe, maybe a little, a little bit more. The 50 feet is only for pure commercial. So if you're building an office, a purely office building, that can go up to 50 feet. If it has any residential component, it would be limited to 35.
I see. So the, in your matrix here, it's 35 feet if the building has residential use at all. And 50 feet if it's, excludes residential. Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Great. That's all I've got. Thanks. Thanks very much for answering our questions. Oh, I, we have one more question here for you.
Yeah. Sorry to go back to this, but I was just rereading some things. I noticed that the, I think it's the, the applicant is considering expanding to two entry exit points from 42nd Avenue. And I'm kind of wondering why a se, I mean, I don't like the first one, but why is the second one necessary?
I'm not sure that would be a question for her. That certainly is nothing that's been approved or kind of rubber stamped by the city. Again, she would have to go through the site plan approval process. And then, you know, Public Works has always referred on those. So they would kind of look at the distance from this to the second proposed to this and kind of make a judgment call there.
Okay.
Let's see, doesn't have a point at that, at this point in time.
Okay. Great. Well, would the applicant mind coming up and answering some questions for us? And if she has more she'd like to add, that would be great. If you can come up and give us your name and address, please.
Hi, everyone. My name is Barb McCarron. And my home address or the...
Just your business address.
4288 Youngfield Street in Wheat Ridge. And to give you guys a little bit of a background, when we purchased this property, I mean, this is a very well-known landmark on Youngfield. Everybody knows the cabin on Youngfield Street. The day it was listed, we went under contract. We loved this building, absolutely loved it. And so my husband and I, we wanted to make, we, one of the prop, or the businesses in there is Radiant Property Management, which is our business. We own 85 units around the Denver area, and so we use that as our office. And unfortunately, what's happened is we turned it into an office complex, but office rates do not cover the property taxes, the mortgage, simply when it's a commercial property. It's already, it's labeled commercial. Property taxes go way up. It's almost $18,000 a year for this property. All the utilities are fourfold. You know, trash is four times what residential is, water, you name it. And it's just that much more expensive. So unfortunately, the rate that we can rent these office spaces out for don't even begin to cover our expenses. So we started thinking, what can we do with this property, keeping the cabin? Mind you, we get, before, it was probably six offers in the first few years to purchase this property. Since that storage facility up the street has been built, we get two to three offers every month to come and buy this property. And what's going to happen is they want to tear the cabin down. We love the cabin. We want to keep it. And so we've had some people come to us and ask, would you ever consider doing a restaurant? No, I don't want to do a restaurant. However, I have a partner and we came up with the idea of a wine and beer tap house where we would feature local Colorado brews and local Colorado wines, have a wine tasting room, large deck out back with a fire pit, really make it a, just that Colorado feel from the mountains, but bring it down here to Wheat Ridge so we can keep this cabin, we can afford the, the price of the land, and hopefully make it a place where people in Wheat Ridge, the businesses, residents, want to come to. It's not going to be like long shots up the street. You know, I know that that has a bad rap. I've never been there. I don't know. But it's going to be upscale. We're going to maintain the structure. We want the Colorado feel inside as well. So anyway, there's a couple of things that were addressed. Unfortunately, I don't have an answer for some of them, simply because we're not jumping ahead with plans because, until we get these first steps in place. We won't have a business there if we don't rezone. You're talking about brewing. I believe we can have, I was told, we can get a special use permit for a brewery, but not for a wine and beer tap house. And the reason it's called tap house, I wanted to tell you that, is because of the taps that are used for the beers. And so they're called tap houses. And anyway, we, so until the, the rezoning is done, our next step is the liquor license. And after that, I've already been in talk, in contact with Trap Architect out of Boulder. They specialize in restaurants and beer and wine, tap houses and breweries. That's when they'll step in and we'll start with the plans for the structure itself. Another concern, when you were talking about the entryway, we, the reason we want two entryways, my house, we live just three miles up the road on, off of McIntyre, and our driveway is a, is a roundabout. I guess you, not a roundabout, you know, kind of like a U shape. And so when we expand the parking lot, and, well, I'll get to that in a second, we would like to go around the building. And then that would be, and not that it's going to be a one-way in, one-way out. That's a possibility if that's easier access. But that's why there would be two entries onto 42nd Avenue. Doesn't have to be. It was just a thought that we had. As for the landscaping, we've already gone in and removed over 30 dead trees that were in there. We've tried to clear up the property. When we do the tap house, we are going to bring in aspen and pine trees to make it that Colorado feel, especially around the back where the deck will be. And we plan on it being a year-round deck with heaters and lights and, and pergola up above. So it's a year-round use. We will expand the parking lot. I think currently we have 26 spaces and obviously we'll expand it to the back. The main entry will be in the back. And we're going to have a food truck. This won't be a restaurant. My partner, not, I own the property, but I'll have a partner in the business. He specializes in smoked meats. And so we will have a trailer and it will be more of a, like you see at New Terrain or any of the breweries. I don't think we're going to have rotating trailers. We'll probably have one and it'll feature smoked meats like ribs and pulled pork and pulled chicken and stuff like that. So it will be a self-serve type thing. The Head Start program, I understand their concern. In their letter, they said that their kids leave at 3:30. So really, our overlap time is going to be quite short. We'll operate under the same business plan as a lot of the breweries in Wheat Ridge and Golden do, which is you open about 2:00 PM and you close at either 10:00 or 11:00 PM. We're not going to be a 1:00 AM bar. We, we will have game tables, like pool tables. We would like to have shuffleboard and we'd like to have card tables. We will have TVs, but it's not going to be a sports bar. We do not plan, even though it's still in the works, most likely we will have a liquor license. We will not serve spirits at this time. The reason we would like a liquor license is because if we ever have a special event there, say a wedding or a party, we would have the ability to serve spirits for that special event. But right now, it's a wine and beer tap house. So I think that covers everything, things that you were talking about, but.
All right. Thanks. Well, let's see if the commissioners have questions. Commissioner Leo, do you have questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Voss, any questions for the applicant?
I do. I have a few. And what's your reason for the deck on the back? I would think the visual would be on the west side towards the mountains.
You can't see the mountains.
No, I know, but just...
And the traffic is so loud. So we would prefer to have it on the backside. Plus, we have a lot more property on the backside and there's a large hill. And so that won't be turned into concrete. And that way, we can plant the pine trees and the aspen in the dirt. And then we'll have an ADA access ramp that would lead to the food truck and the parking lot on that side. So really, the main entrance would move more towards the back. However, we will have one. It's already ADA compliant to the front side. And again, that's something that we're working with the architects right now on how to structure. The main bar area will be on the second floor, which would have a east side entrance. Most likely, the west side entrance will be made into offices.
So you are keeping office?
Our, like, office for the tap house and an employee break room, that kind of stuff, storage for glassware and a glass washing station and that kind of stuff.
So the whole purpose of the log cabin then would be just the bar that you're going to, with the, the back? Well, if you revamped the landscaping there on the east side, that's definitely better than what's existing there now.
Yeah. It's, it's actually just a bunch of weeds. I don't think there's any real trees planted there. And so when I say we, we took down the 30 dead trees, we took down 30 dead things that were back there. And we did plan on building a fence. I don't want Head Start to be worried about, oh, the kids walking out are going to see drunk people coming out. It's kind of a, you know, the far end of the spectrum that I just don't anticipate happening. And plus, the kids will be gone at 3:30. But we absolutely will build a fence. When he talked about a shed, we wanted to, on the property, on the northeast side, we talked about building a shed and that would be for storage also of chairs, tables, but also storage for our other rental properties that we own. We own four properties in Wheat Ridge alone. And a lot of times, we buy refrigerators in bulk or we buy stoves. And so we would like a little shed on the property to store those items, paint or flooring that we might put in our rentals.
That would be one of my next questions in that I believe an MUN excludes sheds on the property.
Oh, okay.
Exterior.
If that's the case, that's okay.
I believe accessory buildings are permitted in the Macy's Neighborhood Zone District.
Let's see. I have noted page 17. Let me see, or somewhere in our packet, yes, on the comparison between current zoning and proposed zoning, the MUN excludes outdoor storage.
Sure. So that means material stored outside. So if she was planning on putting the refrigerators and things like that just out in the parking lot, that would be outside storage.
I see.
So within a shed is, is acceptable.
Okay. That's, that's good.
The shed would match the cabin.
Would. I mean, would, would, be would. So once again, you are not having any tenant businesses in the building?
Correct.
It would strictly be everything related to this bar?
All of our leases are up at the end of January. And so again, this whole process is a year out from actually opening. We, we would probably start to build the back deck end of summer. And that actually, even if we don't, if we do not get the zoning, then we won't do any improvements to the building. We'll probably sell it as is. But if we do and we're awaiting the liquor license, we will go ahead and start building the deck simply because it just is nicer. It's more pleasing. Right now, it's just a, it's broken wood. There's like an exit and it's, it's really run down on the back.
I do understand your concerns on the property tax being excessive and not being able to meet those. But I'm wondering if a beer or a, a bar area covers that anymore than renting out to business, you know, offices? And I just kind of quince at the fact that maybe that wouldn't even be a viable pay the property.
On the calculations, we would need to sell on average 56 drinks a day.
That's all?
Yeah. And that's six days, not seven.
Well, that must be at $10 a drink.
No, we would go off of $4 to $6 per drink. And that's two drinks per person. So it's approximately 23 people per day.
And then also...
Again, it would be more on, you know, other days than Tuesdays or something.
Right. And then also, the food truck, are purchasers allowed to bring that food into the building for their own?
They're actually allowed to order out. So I was, when I saw haciendas, I was like, cool, there's another option. We would have delivery. I would try to set up, what do they call that? A business deal with them and that we, I'm sorry? Yeah, exactly. You were eat, they're more than welcome to bring their own food in. And so, for example, and not that I use New Terrain, that's the only one that I kind of know and it's near my house, you can bring in your own dinners. You cannot bring in your own alcohol, but you can bring in your own food. If you have a party, you can bring in cake. So you can order from pizza up the street, Qdoba, Chipotle. The, the options are limitless just from there. The food truck would just be another option for them.
And then the Head Start requested eight to four when the children wouldn't be there. So you talked about two to 11 and you've got that two-hour overlap. Do you feel the fence is enough of a requirement for that two-hour overlap?
I do.
How deep will the deck come into the eastern part of the property then?
You know, we haven't gone into specific plans simply because I didn't want to get ahead of myself until this was all in place. Like I said, I've talked with them and I have ideas in my head. Enough for outdoor seating and a big fire pit. I would like to come out probably, I'm thinking 20 feet, you know, but that's hard to say right at this point.
Then what's that distance from, if you come out 20 feet, do you know what that leaves on the property between the parking lot of the school then?
Gosh, I don't know. What do you guys think?
Okay.
It's wide of ways. I mean, if you come, and that was the other thing, when you, we were talking about the entryway and proximity to Youngfield. If you go and look at the property, it's actually very close. It's a quick entry into there. It's 1.4 acres. And if you see that the house is situated a little bit closer to the west side. And so, you know, you'd say that's a three-quarters of an acre in. So you've got another three-quarters of an acre out. I, I don't know.
That's okay. I just thought maybe you knew. But with that parking lot there between the school and your property, that gives it a bit of a buffer too.
Absolutely. And like I said, I, I think there's restrictions on how many parking spaces we can have. The more I would be happier with. But we are going to maintain 20% landscaping. The front will remain the same. We're set with that parking space there. But I, like I said, I, I like the park-like setting personally. And again, just thinking the Colorado cabin, keeping that in mind is what our, our thoughts are.
Thank you.
Talking about the, the ISOs, when you go up Youngfield, I think that this cabin is really kind of a fun little spot to look at.
Just before we continue, I just want to remind the commissioners and the audience that tonight we're talking about a rezoning. So we should make sure we take into account all those possible uses that might be included. So we should make sure we take into account all those possible uses that might be included in the zoning that we're considering. Specific uses, as staff noted, we will have that opportunity to ask some specific questions about specific use as we move forward, too. So Commissioner Larson, do you have questions?
So I'm clear on that part of it. When you come back with this specific use, these sorts of issues will be clarified, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And like I said, if we could, I originally approached them about doing a special use permit instead of rezoning, but again, it's very specific. A special use only allows for brewing, so we would have to brew our own beer and sell it, but we cannot just sell it with a special use. So therefore, we have to go through the rezoning.
I think I misspoke. I don't think I meant to say special use permit. I think I meant to say, like, a development plan, something like that. Is that, would that be our next step?
Well, actually, if it's rezoned to Macy's Neighborhood, there, the next step is a site plan, which is an administrative process, excuse me. So it's not the specific development plan like Scott talked about, that's for plan developments.
All right. Thanks for clarifying that for me. That's my mistake.
Yep, no worries.
So are, are these sorts of questions better held back, or?
Well, I don't know. I, from a, just from a process standpoint, I think these are fine. I think we should just keep in mind when we're, when we're talking about a rezoning case like this, we need to think forward to, maybe not what this applicant might do, but say she sells the property in five years, it's still zoned as Macy's Neighborhood, how might that, the zoning that we're considering, allow for other uses, either more with perhaps more potential impact or less potential impact down the line, too?
Well, and not to interrupt you, but in five years, you figure that the crossroads property will be fully developed at that point, and so there's going to be a whole new can of worms opened up for that. And I think that in five years, it'd probably be a lot easier to rezone this as a commercial. You know, just things are changing so quickly along that corridor. You know, and I spoke with the three neighbors that did show up. One of them has lived there, she's probably in her 70s, she was born in that house, and it's directly behind the storage unit. I understand her frustration and, and her being upset about that, and I, you know, I don't have anything to do with the storage unit, but that road is just changing so quickly, and I do feel very badly, but I'm kind of hoping that for those residents that stay there, that we might be a place where they would be happy about, they could come and hang out. And they seemed, when they left, to be two thumbs up with it, so...
Do you have some more questions?
These shouldn't take more than just a minute or two. The food truck, is that anchored, or will it be moved in and out? Will it be there all the time?
There are certain regulations for food trucks, and they have to have their own home base. That is my partner's thing. So a lot of these, the food trucks are responsible for themselves. I have to provide a place for them, but they are totally regulated on their own, and so they have their own rules, but that would be separate from us completely. We'll have, and so it's going to be in a trailer, so it'll be removed. I don't know how many times, but they have requirements that they have to go to a cleaning station, and they either rent it, or they own it, and it's off-site. And they go and clean their food truck, and then that's when they are, they come in and, gosh, all their licensing requires that they go to a certain place.
You mentioned the shed. Is there plans at this point for where, where the trash would go?
Yeah, the trash would go out by the shed, and that would be in the northeast corner. And the trash would be inside the shed, so the shed would be closer to the fence line, obviously, less than five feet, I think that it has to be in. And then that way, the trash, when it's next to it, would be quick access from the food truck.
And enclosed?
Yes.
Good, okay. And then, and this may or may not be appropriate, but what do you think about in terms of signage with the highway right there?
We won't change, we already have all the signs that are necessary. That 30-foot sign has already, that will stay, and as will our shorter sign that's in place, and that, so we won't add any additional signs. Just change them out.
Great, thank you.
Right. Commissioner Dorsey, any questions? Commissioner Peterson, do you have any questions for the applicant? Okay. I don't have any, well, actually, I do have one question. Did you, have you considered any impact on traffic or potential for traffic, pedestrian or otherwise, coming up from the green belts along Young Field?
I haven't. I'm hoping we get traffic from the green belts, because I, I do Ironmans myself, and so we are meeting place for starting bike rides. The reason I say New Terrain is because that's where we meet, and so I really do hope that we can have a line of bike racks. And then, I don't know what the sidewalk situation is. I've actually not looked at it, and if I'm not mistaken...
I actually rode it yesterday, and there's not mu, not much of one up from the green belt, so that might be something to talk to the city about.
Well, I certainly wouldn't mind putting it in front of our property, but I, I don't think I should have to put it in front of our neighbor's property. Though I, like I said, I would welcome pedestrians and bicycles to come. It's not that far off of, and I have, we have thought about the impact of the traffic. I know that it's already, the times that I go by there, I've never been in traffic, but I don't, I'm a mom, I don't do normal work times. They were trying to tell us that traffic will cut through their neighborhood, and I don't mind saying, you know, no left turn out of our property. We've already discussed that at the meeting. I think it was exaggerated a little bit, because one of the women tried to tell me that she's had three dogs killed on her street from cars racing, and it took her 15 minutes to get out of her driveway. And when she said that, I was like, okay, you know, I'm not going to argue with her. A little bit of an exaggeration, I can imagine that it took her 15 minutes to get out of her driveway. But, so maybe I should check it out, but again, I've never experienced that type of traffic there when I go by it. You guys might know better.
Well, I know we've had testimony from that, from that citizen in another case, right around the street, where she's mentioned that, but do you have some, something to add to that?
Sure, so it's just part of a regular zone change. They wouldn't be required to show any traffic. As you mentioned, there's a range of uses, so it's kind of hard to do a traffic study or something like that for a range of uses. But in response to another proposed development in the area, there are traffic counters being set up on 42nd and Xenon to get an actual count of how many cars are going down each one of those streets, and then our Public Works Department will kind of assess the situation once they get those numbers and see what potential solutions might be. So that, that's just one thing that, that is happening. The counters are either already out or will be out very soon along both of those street frontages, in response to the traffic concerns of the neighborhood.
Yeah, okay, all right.
And I know the traffic going right now, the entry and crossroads is just south, under the highway, so I know that a lot of changes are going to be occurring soon to compensate for those entries.
Okay, great. Are there any other questions? Okay, great. Thank you for answering those questions. And now is the time for the Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens who have signed up to speak, Zach? All right, thank you. So we've got some folks here who have signed up. If you, I'll call, I'll call your names as written down here. If you'd like to speak when I call your name, just come on up and give us your name and address, and please address us, the commissioners, if you have questions or comments, and then once we've heard from everybody, we'll try and get those questions or concerns answered either by staff or the applicant. Barb, let's see, Barb McAherne? That's you, I'm sorry, yeah. Sorry, of course, that's you. You introduced yourself. Gail Perryman? Hi, come on up.
Hello, good evening. I'm Gail Perryman.
Can you spell your last name, please?
P-E-R-R-Y-M-A-N. Address 5150 Allison Street, Nevada. And I am the Head Start Director for Jefferson County as a grantee for a Head Start program. This site right behind the proposed establishment is our second Head Start building, and I wanted to just say that we, we do not feel that a liquor establishment is appropriate right next to our Head Start program. We've been there for a little over 11 years.
Excuse me, could you speak more closely into the microphone?
We've been there a little over 11 years, and our, our program serves, as you might know, primarily low-income families and their children. So it is a preschool center, but it is also a center for low-income families with parenting classes and classes on substance abuse, things like that, that we're, are very invested in the local community in supporting our families. This establishment, of course, as you've seen, is, is right next door, too. Actually, it's our parking lot. It is a very small parking lot, 10 to 12, maybe, parking spaces. We often rope off that parking space to allow, because the, the, right next to the parking area is also a playground. Playground is really technically more of a toddler playground. We work with children three to five, so we rope that off, and the children are right in that area, so that they, you know, have more room for bicycles and what have you. So just to keep that in mind, that is, that's used quite often when the weather is good. And our children leave there, but they can stay till 5:30, so just to keep that in mind. And so it's Monday through Friday, and parents pick up, you know, no late in 5:30, but in all honesty, sometimes they're, they're late and they're not there till, till quite later. So, so, yes, so, so that is a concern of ours, and we have already talked about, in the letter, we identified to some, following, some ideas to mitigate the, the negative impact for, for our program, which is, again, the fencing, which I appreciate hearing that that is also identified as a concern by others. And the start, the start time also is a concern. I have to say, I am concerned about the, you know, the back decking. I can understand all of this, but I am concerned if it's on that east side, it's facing our parking lot with our, our children and our families. Children sometime nap in between 12 to 2, depending on their age in the classroom. We have the dogs and the kennels to one side, which is quite interesting, and then I, I just, I see, you know, am concerned about that and possible music and what have you. So, a little concerned also hearing about a second entrance and where that entrance would go, and how close that would be to our property on that east side. And I do want to just add that our, we've been there for over 11 years, and our staff are, we have some staff who consistently have worked in this site for several years, and they have been reporting to us that they're having quite a hard time getting home, because in both, when they leave and head out to Young Field, it's very difficult, the traffic is very difficult for them to get out on both areas, and have talked to us about, you know, what they do. They'd either come 15 minutes early to, you know, because it, it's keeping them from even knowing to get home. So we've kind of been working with them on that, just a change that they've seen in that area. So, yes, so we, we talked about the fence, and of course, a larger setback, just, you know, to give, to give that space in between our, our site, and, let's see, yep, and, and the, the start time, again, I think that needs to be looked at, because as I said again, our, our children are there till 5:30 oft, quite often.
Great, well, thank you for your comments. All right, we'll, we'll see if we can get some answers to some of those concerns. Let's see, Matt Martin, if you'd like to speak, please come on up and give us your name and address for the record.
I'm Matt Martin. I'm the branch manager for DBC Irrigation Supply on 12750 West 42nd Avenue. Really, our, our concerns here, there's, there's just two things in the mid, one is we're concerned that we're going to have people leaving their cars in our parking lot in the morning when you come to work. We're a pretty busy irrigation supply house, and we're just, we don't want people from the bar ending up in our parking lot and then leaving their car overnight or something like that, they had a couple too many beers. And then the other concern is just the intersection there at 42nd and Young Field, it's, it's kind of a bad intersection. There's a lot of, people are going pretty fast around that corner, and, I mean, we'd love to see like a light or something, some sort of a street light put there, because I mean, it's pretty tough pulling out of there as it is now, and I think there'll be more traffic, and it'll just kind of heighten the problems that we're having with that, with that intersection. And really, that's, that's about all we have.
Okay, great, well, thanks. We'll, we'll see if we can talk a little bit more with staff about some of that. Thank you. All right, Jared Watts? Would you, okay, great. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to come up and speak? Please come on up, state your name and address, and give us your comments.
Hi, my name's Courtney Hartman. I'm with the Jefferson County Attorney's Office, and I'm here on behalf of Head Start. My address is 100 Jefferson County Parkway, Golden, 80419. I just wanted to make a couple of points and ask one question. One is, this is a bar next to a school, so we just fundamentally think that's not, not a good situation, and that's why Head Start and the county are opposed to the rezoning. The applicant is, is suggesting a very nice facility, but as the chairman has pointed out, there's no guarantee that that's who's going to be operating the facility in the future, so we really need to look at what the use is. Another point would be, there was some discussion about putting trash to the northeast. We would actually request that that goes and be pushed to the northwest, away from the school, and closer to the right-of-way. And then finally, if you could clarify the site plan process? I think maybe the description at the beginning of the hearing was incorrect. There was some discussion that if there was opposition to the next step in the process, that would go to City Council? Is that correct, or did that change with the different plan? If you could just clarify.
Why don't you go ahead and answer that now, before we get to the other questions?
Okay, so the City Council, that was for the special use permit. If they decided to do a brewery, the microbrewery on the site, without changing the zoning, it would require a special use permit, and then opposition would push that to a City Council hearing. So if the zoning, if the rezoning is approved to the Macy's Neighborhood, then it's a different process, it's a site plan process, and that's administrative. So then we'd just be making sure that they are meeting the requirements of the city code. They would also, I just want to add, maybe for general knowledge, they would also have to go through a liquor license process, which is a public process as well, and that's where things like operating hours and those types of limitations can be imposed with that, that liquor license. And then if the, if the owner were to sell and someone else were to buy it and want to rent a bar, they would have to go through the liquor license process again, or for that new liquor license for whatever they were proposing. So I just wanted to also clarify that, that there's a couple of processes that if the zoning is approved, they would have to go through in order to, to accomplish that. Sorry for going on.
Okay. Does that, does that address some of your concerns, or some of your, clarify some of your, answer to your questions?
At least clarifies them, yeah.
Okay, all right. Did you have anything else you wanted to add? Okay, great, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? All right, I'll close the public hearing then, and we'll go through some of these concerns and comments from the public, and we'll ask them of staff and the applicant if applicable. First thing I wanted to do is just kind of go a little bit, just, just reiterate, I think with staff, what, what you just addressed. Zach, the liquor license application is a public hearing process. That's where some of these concerns with neighbor, neighborhood concerns, appropriateness of use, that particular use within the neighborhood, those, that's, that's, that would be an appropriate forum to address those concerns?
Yes, that would be another forum to address those concerns. So, I mean, the, the use is permitted under this, the proposed zone district, but they would still need to go through the liquor license process. For the... For the straight zone districts, like the mixed use that we're talking about, we don't typically apply too many conditions to those, so we would not recommend applying operating hour conditions to the zoning, because then there's no way of really ensuring that that follows through, then it just gets lost in a buried ordinance. It would certainly be enforceable if we brought it back up, but it's just easier to enforce if it's part of an approved liquor license, you know, those, those operating conditions. I think Emory Dorsey's recommendation for the requiring the fence, I think that could be an appropriate condition for the zoning, because we will then use, you know, this to inform the, the site plan that they would go through if this is all approved. Sorry, I think I went kind of off there, but did that answer the question?
No, I think that, that, that's, I think, helpful for everyone to kind of help understand the process for a, one of the particular uses that this property could, could have on it if the zone change is, is approved. As far as Ms. Perryman's, one of, one of their other concerns about traffic, do you have any idea when the results of that traffic camera study will be complete and, you know, actionable or available for discussion?
You know, I, I don't. The, so the, the property that kind of spurred that, that traffic count is the 42nd and Xenon, which is currently under consideration, and that was continued to a date certain. I want to, I'm going to look on my phone here. I want to say July 9th, but let's double check if that's a Monday. It is a Monday, so I, it may be July 9th, don't, don't quote me on that, but it would be in the, the city council record. And I think that's when city council wanted them to bring forward some traffic counts. So I believe they would be available by July 9th.
Okay. So if, if folks in the neighborhood or concerned citizens had wanted, wanted more information about traffic counts and maybe what the city, what, what the city council might want to do as far as, as far as addressing that issue right at 42nd and Xenon, that, that'd be sort of the timeframe to look at?
Sure, yeah, that's when we'll have counts available. And right now, I don't think we have counts for Xenon or 42nd. They're both pretty short roads, so I don't know if we have readily, readily available information. So Public Works is refraining from making any suggestions until they have kind of that hard data in front of them.
Yeah, as I recall from the, the case that you were referring to, right at the corner of Xenon and 42nd, there were no, there were no traffic count numbers. And I think the last time it was a big concern was several years ago when that diesel repair shop went in up at about 44th and Xenon, and there weren't numbers available then either. Okay. Parking lot concerns from Mr. Martin. Are there any, it, obviously with mixed-use neighborhood, if it was, uses a higher or medium-density residential, with you saying maybe 20 units or so, there's certain parking requirements there, certain number per unit. When we're talking about an establishment like the one the applicant is proposing, putting in, what sort of parking requirements are we looking at, at there? Just, just so we can get some context for kind of the range of parking that you might see in this type of a zoning, between, say, residential, you know, exclusively residential use versus the use like the applicant's considering?
Sure. So we would use the restaurant category into the mixed-use development or Article 11. So restaurant, it's a minimum of four spaces per every thousand square feet and a maximum of 10 spaces per every thousand square feet. So when the site plan comes through, we would make sure that it complies with those. I, I believe when we ran the numbers, back when all of this started, when she came to us and kind of proposed what she wanted to do, and we did the pre-application meeting, I think Scott ran the numbers, and she would need more parking no matter what. Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't have the exact numbers, but I think at minimum, there would be like a couple more spaces, but they could actually add a significant amount of spaces and still be within that requirement. So I think they really only need to add a few, but they do have to add an ADA accessible space. I think they, there's one right now, but I think they will need two. So there will definitely be some upgrades that are required for the parking facilities.
Okay, all right.
I think the applicant's intention has always been to add, I mean, she's, she's going to be adding pavement kind of around the back of the building, so it better be worthwhile, I would think. And then just an added note, I mean, if people are continually parking kind of in the neighboring businesses, I mean, that is trespassing, so you can certainly call the police department. I know that, kind of when you're arriving at work, that the first thing you don't want to do is have to call the police and then wait for them to show up to tow a car, but that is always an option if, if that does occur. Just that, I mean, that is trespassing, and the tow, the car could be towed, but more, more to this site, parking will be added, and, and those are the thresholds for that.
Okay. Well, it's good to have some context for that in terms of parking use. As far as Ms. Hartman's opposition to a drinking establishment next to a school, again, that I think might be a better addressed at a liquor license application. As far as specific locations for trash or accessory, accessory structures, things like that, is that something we should be considering in this application, or is that, is that something that, that maybe citizens could address to staff, you know, just to take into consideration as part of that administrative site plan?
Sure, yeah. I mean, they can definitely make comments when, when the site plan is in. And I, I can't remember off the top of my head, so it's kind of a tricky situation because if it's rezoned mixed use, then it'll be a non-conforming building, because it should be up closer to the street. So I'm not sure, the, part of the site plan process would be ensuring that any accessory buildings are compliant with the mixed-use code. So I, I'm not sure if they could be pushed all the way up. Well, maybe, do you know off the top of your head? If like an accessory building could be closer to Youngfield?
I'm looking here right now.
Yeah, I'm not sure off the top of my head if it could be pushed all the way to Youngfield Street, but it could certainly be, you know, maybe centralized on the site away from, from the Head Start. That could be something that we can discuss with the applicant, if she's willing to kind of make that adjustment. In, in terms of placement, she certainly could propose it there, and I don't think that would be in, there being close to the Head Start, and I don't think that would be in violation of the mixed-use code, so we wouldn't be able to deny that. But I, I think she's pretty willing to work with folks, so maybe we can, we can talk to her about that during the site plan process.
There is a section of the code that, as far as utilities and screening and, and things like that, where they do need to be placed to the side or rear of buildings and not visible from the street. There are screening requirements and landscaping buffer requirements, which would be taken into account in the site plan review.
Sure, sure. And I know that that can vary with new construction on a mixed-use neighborhood by how high the structure is and where the structure's located on the site, stuff like that, too. All right, well, that's what I have in my notes as far as feedback. Before we entertain a motion, I'll just give the commissioners one more chance to ask any final questions of staff or the applicant. Yeah, Commissioner Ross?
Has the applicant and the school sat down and talked one-on-one on this?
I'm not sure.
Nope. Okay, the applicant's indicating she hasn't.
Has not. I would suggest that that be a thing to do with all these concerns between the two. And then with Mr. Martin, I know it's an extra step or two, but if he's concerned about the parking in his property, I guess signage needs to go up and maybe a chain across the entrance to the parking lot, as I've seen plenty of other businesses do when they close at night. They don't want people coming in and out, so that might be a possibility, too. But it seems like we need to do a little bit more talking amongst the, the groups. And Zach, can there be a, another traffic count at the entrance to Youngfield off of 42nd? We've had more people comment about that intersection being difficult to get out onto while they're doing the one down at Xenon.
So there is a count on Xenon, and there is also one on 42nd. I think they place them midway through, through the block since they're not very long.
Well, it seems like the more issue is at Youngfield, from what a couple of citizens commented on.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. I mean, that could certainly be something that we could ask if Public Works.
All right, any more? Mr. Peterson?
On, a couple of things, parking and traffic. What are the chances of getting no parking on 42nd? I mean, realistically?
Yeah, I talked to Public Works about that, actually. So currently, it's a public street and they can't restrict it. The police department can enforce if parked cars are blocking the driveways. And then, you know, what they told me is that if, if the parking situation along 42nd is causing a, a serious safety issue, then Public Works can kind of identify if no parking signs or any potential solutions, including no parking signs would be adequate there. I know that this is pretty standard citywide. We, we, we don't kind of intervene in public parking unless it's presenting a, a true safety issue to, to the street and the functionality.
What qualifies as a true safety issue?
I was just told safety issue by Public Works, so I, I don't know. I would assume some sort of input from the police department noting, yep, it's a safety concern. I don't know what that threshold is. I wish I would have asked Steve maybe to stay for this one as well, I apologize.
On, on the traffic issue, a couple of comments. First, I have a question. Does, does Head Start sort of like a school in that there's a drop-off time and a pickup time? And how many students are there?
We can max out at 64.
So we have the potential of 64 cars showing up?
Actually, yeah, could you come up just so we can get this for the record and for the folks watching at home? Thanks.
We can max out at 64, and that's approximately 10, and plus about 10 staff.
Okay, and, and so do they all sort of show up at the same time and they all leave approximately the same time? I mean, within a window?
Yes, yes. We do 15-minute staggered start and drop and pickup times.
Okay, okay. The traffic count, it's a good idea to do a traffic count because there's been a lot of talk about those two streets, but it seems like the, the property under consideration is going to pretty much make any traffic count null and void, because you're entertaining, creating a business that's going to generate probably as much traffic as the Head Start program, we would hope, and that they would stay for a while and drink six bucks of beer or something. So, so a traffic count really isn't going to do us much good in figuring out what to do with this property for the simple reason that this property is going to generate more traffic. And, and there's, you may put a left-hand turn on, going on to 42nd Avenue, but I don't think you can steer traffic not to go down Xenon Street to get to this place, unless you're going to do some really weird traffic control obstacles in the street.
No, so the city is not going to enforce any no-left turns out of the property on to 42nd Avenue. That was something that was brought up by the neighbors during the neighborhood meeting. I believe another business in the area has some no-turning towards the neighborhood signs, and the applicant stated that they would be willing to put those up. That would not be something that the city would require, but that the applicant would be, you know, at that time stated that they were willing to do. I can't guarantee that that will be done.
So, okay, yeah, that's my point. I mean, the, the city can't really control the amount of cars that go down Xenon or 42nd to go to the proposed tap house, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Thanks for helping with that. Any more questions from the commissioners? All right. I'll entertain a motion on the case.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of case number WZ-18-12. A request for approval of a zone change from neighborhood commercial to mixed-use neighborhood for property located at 4288 Youngfield Street for the following reasons. First, the proposed zone change will promote the public health, safety, or welfare of the community and does not result in an adverse effect on the surrounding neighborhood. Second, utility infrastructure adequately services the property. Third, the proposed zone change is consistent with the goals and objective of the city's comprehensive plan. Fourth, the zone change will provide additional opportunity for reinvestment in the area. And fifth, the criteria used to evaluate a zone change support does support the request.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Should there be any conditions that we've talked about that can go on this?
Well, if you'd like to add a condition, you can certainly.
Well, it seemed like Zach said about the only one would be the barrier fence of the three that were talked about, and because you can't enforce a no-left turn, it would be nice to have the sign there, I guess, for a suggestion, but...
Yeah, so, yeah, the city won't require that a no-left turn be put there. And the second was operating conditions, which would be, or operating hours, which would be for the, the liquor license at that point in time.
Right, and that barrier fence that the school recommended, that could be a condition?
Sure, yeah, if the commission would like to add that. I think that would be appropriate.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. What I'm hearing is that, that we can add a condition of approval that says a fence will be erected between the properties? Am I hearing that right?
That you can? Can, yes.
That we, we can add a, a condition of approval?
Sure, yeah.
To the approval, you can add this condition, right?
Yeah.
I, I move that, that the following condition be added, that the site plan includes a description... Oh, I'm sorry.
Instead of moving, why don't you just, you can just amend your motion to add that condition?
I, I would like to amend the motion to add that condition, that a six-foot barrier fence be installed along the eastern property line between the school and the property to limit access to the preschool grounds and to mitigate noise.
All right. Is that amenable to you, since you seconded it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any discussion on the motion? Yes?
I would still like to see, and I don't know how we do this, the Head Start and the applicant have more of a get-together meeting before we... It's my understanding we're ruling on the zoning, but I think, I think a lot of what the possibilities are for this zoning needs to be more of a, a structure who, who has concerns.
All right, well, I, I'm sorry, we've, we've, we've closed, we've closed that part, part of the meeting, but I'm sure the, I'm sure the applicant wants to make sure they have successful relations with their neighbors, and I would hope they would get together and have those discussions, regardless of what structure they were or business they were planning on putting there, moving forward with this zoning. I'd just like to say, I, I'm, I'm supporting this, this motion because with all the changes that are happening in this part of Wheat Ridge, with the Clear Creek Crossing development seeming to be moving forward, with the increased commercial pressure that this interchange is coming on, I think having mixed-use, a mixed-use neighborhood zoned property right here at this corner is going to allow that property to be, to be very flexible in the future for possible residential development, a high, medium, or low-density development, possible commercial development, you know, whatever, whatever seems to be, you know, more, most appropriate as the conditions change over here. So I think it's, I think it's, this, this sort of zoning is something I'm definitely going to support myself. So with no other comments, I will call for a vote.
Motion carried, five to one.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for their presentations, comments, and consideration on that case. All right, our last case of the night. Yes? Oh, yes. We'll take a short 10-minute break and we'll reconvene then. Thank you.
Oh, man. Speaking back to work, I'll adjourn or re-commence our meeting here. We're going to finish with tonight's cases with case number WZ-18-14, an application filed by RJP Investment Trust for approval of the zone change from Commercial One to Mixed Use Neighborhood for property located at 6701 West 44th Avenue, and I will ask for the staff report, please.
Sure, all right. For the record again, Zach Walzmann is planner with the Community Development Department. WZ-1814, request for a rezon from Commercial One to Mixed Use Neighborhood. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and the digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification imposing requirements have been met, and therefore the planning commission does have jurisdiction to hear the case.
So entered.
The property is located on the north side of 44th Avenue, right parallel to Otis Street, so just east of Pierce. As you can see here in this 2016 aerial, it contains one building. The zoning in the area, the zoning on the property is Commercial One, as is the kind of strip of properties along 44th Avenue to the east designated by this kind of reddish color. This orange color represents restricted commercial, which is slightly less intensive commercials in district than the Commercial One, and that's present kind of scattered throughout to the west and the southeast. There's a spot of A1 in the middle of this farm here, and then there is two, this is actually two properties here, rezoned to Mixed Use Neighborhood, I believe in 2014. I'd have to check my staff report to verify that. So those are rezoned to Mixed Use Neighborhood. And then to the north and the south of 44th Avenue, kind of moving off that main corridor, transitions into a residential neighborhood, mostly zoned residential two with single-family homes. There are some duplexes kind of scattered throughout, and then there's a little pocket of residential three, which has some low-scale multifamily properties like these here. I have a few pictures of the property. This is looking north from 44th Avenue at the existing structure in the parking lot that surrounds the building. This is looking northeast from 44th Avenue, so kind of try to get the frontage there. This is, you know, right here approximately is the western property line. And then this is a view looking northwest. Again, try to get that street frontage there, and then, you know, this is approximately the property line there. This proposed zone change would allow the property to be used residentially, commercially, or as a live-work mixed-use property. The slide shows how we treat residential uses in commercial zone districts, including the current zone district Commercial One. So, of course, the existing commercial can remain. The existing commercial can add in accessory residence. As I stated in the previous presentation, there is kind of a long list of criteria that need to be met in order for that residence to exist there, and it can be pretty difficult for many sites to meet those criteria. And then, you know, the property as a whole cannot convert from commercial to residential since it is a commercial property with commercial zoning. The Mixed Use Neighborhood, on the other hand, would allow the property to be used commercially, residentially, mixed-use, as I just mentioned, and is less restrictive in how the property is used residentially, or a portion of thereof is used residentially as compared to the Commercial One zoning, excuse me. At this time, the applicant is not proposing any new development. The applicant is the owner of the property, who has noted that he's had several potential tenants interested in having a live-work situation here. I believe, and the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong, but including the current tenant was maybe interested in doing, you know, operating the business out of the front and living in the back, or, you know, however that works out. So with that being said, no new development is proposed at this time, though, however, you know, properties can change hands in the future, or plans can change. So we present this matrix to show what the development standards are in the current zone district, as well as what they are in the proposed zone district. So we already covered uses. The architecture is generally the same. There's slight differences between the Mixed Use Code and the Architectural and Site Design Manual, but they are not too different. The Commercial One zoning allows buildings up to 50 feet tall. The Mixed Use Neighborhood does allow buildings up to 50 feet tall if they're purely commercial or retail. If there's any residential uses, then they're limited to 35 feet. They have the same build two that would be, you know, required along 44th Avenue. The sides are relatively similar. They have, they both have landscape buffer requirements from the adjacent residential properties. And then the lot coverage is also relatively similar, with some incentives, again, for a true mixed-use building to have a little bit less landscaping than a non-mixed-use building or under the existing C1 zoning. There was a neighborhood meeting held on May 16th of this year, and as you may be shocked to find out, there were zero neighbors in attendance. So there was no input there from any neighbors. There were no concerns during the outside referral period to outside agencies and city departments, and staff did receive one call inquiring about the zone change. They were just questioning what exactly the zone change was to, and then they didn't have any issues or concerns. They just said, "Okay, thanks." So no major issues or concerns from referral agencies or neighbors. As the commissioners are aware, we use several criteria to evaluate zone change requests, including the comprehensive plan. So here is an image from that plan. Again, the subject property is outlined here with a blue star. This pink dotted line along 44th Avenue represents a neighborhood commercial corridor, and that envisions a transition from the corridor into a residential property. So it serves as, as kind of like that neighborhood buffer that we talked about before, promotes some mixed-use development and kind of scaling back as you move back into the neighborhoods into residential, low-scale residential. So the Mixed Use Neighborhood zoning, which allows a mix of uses, would be an appropriate zone district for this location along 44th Avenue, neighborhood commercial corridor. So staff has concluded that the request does meet the zone change criteria. It is supported by the comprehensive plan, as we just mentioned, which calls for neighborhood commercials serving mixed-use properties. The Mixed Use Neighborhood is compatible with the surrounding area, which does already include a wide range of commercial and residential properties, as will be noted on the zoning map, and the zone change would not have an adverse impact on the public welfare. So for these reasons, staff does recommend approval. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions. The applicant is also here, and he can answer questions as well if you'd like.
Great. Thanks for that report. We'll take, start with questions from this side. Commissioner Leo, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Voss, any questions?
Just one, Zach. So, commercial can contain no living, and residence can contain no commercial in the gist of everything in the city.
Generally speaking, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, of course, residential zoning, you can have a home occupation, but there's pretty strict limitations on that.
With a licensing, you would have to have.
Exactly. Yep, and there's pretty strict limitations that we can enforce on that. And then conversely, there is some residential uses that could be in commercial zone districts. I don't, we don't see that very often at all, because it's quite a list of, you know, size and location requirements that a lot of sites just can't meet. So generally, yes, but there are, you know, a couple of exceptions.
Thank you.
Commissioner Larson, questions?
No.
Nope. Commissioner Dorsey?
No.
Commissioner Peterson? All right. I just had one question for you. I'm looking at, looking at this photo you've got up on the screen. Looks like the subject property outlined in red, looks like the, it contains the south end of the property directly to the north of the subject property. Is that, can you explain that for me? Because I noticed it on the zone map, too, that the zone boundary also went into what looks like the backyard there. And I could see that to the properties on the west and the east, you know, the back, the northernmost property line runs, you know, several feet to the north of where it appears the fence is on the subject property. So I was just wondering if you could shed some light on that discrepancy.
I don't have any knowledge to the best. So there could be a couple of explanations here. So a previous property owner, back in the, you know, back in the day, folks swapped property here and there, and it's possible that a previous owner said, you know, "I'm not using that back part. You can build your fence five feet more and, or, you know, into my property and have some yard for your residence." That could be a possibility. The parcel lines that we get from the assessor aren't 100% accurate, so we use them kind of generally, so it could just be off from the assessor, and we, you know, if any redevelopment were to happen on the site, we would verify that through a survey that would be required. There isn't one required just for a zone change to Mixed Use Neighborhood. So those are the two possibilities of what could be going on. I don't know, and maybe, maybe the applicant knows, or maybe he, this is the first time he's seen that, too, and maybe it's just an error. I'm not, I'm not sure.
So if, yeah, and we can certainly ask the applicant, too. If we approved this zone change request, would there be any adverse effect if, in fact, there was some, because what we're, what we're looking at here and what the, you know, what the datum shows on the zoning map, you know, does appear to go into this, the backyard of this other house, would that just be regarded as an administrative error or a clerical error or something?
Sure, yeah. So what we would do if this gets approved is look at the legal description and use that to change the zone district. If it does include that rear portion of the property, then it includes that rear portion of the property, or whatever that situation is.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, and then if, if there needs to be some sort of administrative adjustment or something, if they have some sort of adverse possession, then we can administratively adjust that, yeah.
Okay. And since there's a residence behind their zoning, it makes you neighborhood wouldn't have an adverse effect necessarily on that property anyways.
No, so we would treat it, if that truly was the property and it, and it, it is the residential property, then we would treat it as a split-zone property. So the existing residence, I believe, is R3, you know, is contained kind of as it is, and then they could technically do mixed-use neighborhood uses in that strip in the back, technically, although it, open spaces allowed, so I guess we would just treat it as such.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't notice that until right now, actually.
All right.
All of my, looking at this case and the property, I didn't notice that.
I mean, it's not the first time we've, we've seen cases like this, where there's, you know, boundaries are a little off on the aerial, so I just, just, I noticed it. I wanted to say something about it, just in case.
Noted, yeah. We'll make sure we follow the legal description if this gets approved for the rezoning boundary.
Okay, great. Thank you. Now's the time to hear from the applicant, if the applicant would like to make himself available for questions, say, make a statement about, about the case. He's more than welcome to. Just come on up and state your name and address, please.
Yeah, I'm Robert Patricus. I'm the trustee of the RJP Investment Trust, the owner of the property. My address, office address is 1410 Carr Street in Lakewood, 80214.
Great. Was there anything you'd like, any statement you'd like to make, anything you'd like to say, or just make yourself available for questions?
I'm just available for questions. I've had the property since 2013, rehabbed it completely. It's a self-contained home office. People have wanted to, including the current tenant, to use it as a live-work space. So that's why I'm here.
Okay, great. Well, we'll take questions from the commissioners. Commissioner Peterson, do you have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Commissioner Dorsey? Commissioner Larson?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Voss? Commissioner Leo?
I just have one question. So the, the people who are living there now?
Nobody's living there, but, yeah.
But you said that...
The current tenant is Allstate. It's an Allstate insurance agency.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
And they've been in there, Christina Pulciani's been in there three years, going on one more year on her lease. And this whole application was prompted by her request to me, which I had other requests in the first year we leased it, in which I didn't do anything about it at the time, and, because then I hooked up with Christina and Allstate, and she has made the request in the interest of also possibly purchasing the property.
Oh.
So she would like to use it as a work-live arrangement.
Okay.
It's conducive to that as a home with certain office modifications made inside.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
Sure.
Okay, great. I don't have, I don't have any additional questions.
Maybe a point of clarification that was maybe confusing. So the, I should have mentioned during my presentation, it was originally built as a house and was converted, I think I detailed this in the staff report, in the '80s to a, to a commercial structure. So I think that's maybe what we meant by, like, home, home office, or thing, something like that. And that's why it is conducive to having residential use kind of put back in there if the zoning is correct, because I believe it still contains many of those elements of the home, like the kitchen that probably feels like a home kitchen rather than a, you know, break room. So just a point of clarification.
Historical point, there, it's actually three buildings put together. The back building was built in 1910.
Oh, interesting.
Furthest one back. When we rehabbed the entire facility, when you go up in the attic, you can see how the, it's actually three structures put into one.
All right. Okay, well, thanks very much for coming here. Now's the time for the citizens forum. I don't believe there's anyone signed up to speak, but I'll ask. Is there anyone signed up to speak?
Just the applicant.
Just the applicant, all right. And we've heard from the applicant, so I'll close the public, the citizens forum. And I will, I'll entertain a motion.
Before we do that...
Sure.
Do we need to include a condition of getting this understanding about that little strip of land in the back there?
I don't...
Does that even need to be in there?
I don't think so, no.
Yeah, in the past, when, when we've seen things like this, it's, as Zach said, it's something that's usually handled administratively.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah, oh, yeah. If, yeah, if anyone has questions for staff, let's go ahead and ask.
Zach, I have a, if, if we approve this, it's an MUN, it's only .45 of an acre.
Mm-hmm.
So an MUN would allow up to, I forget, 35 and 50, based on residential or commercial. And would that actually fit on that size property? And then what do you do about parking space requirements?
So are you talking about residential units?
Well, I'm talking about if we approve the MUN, and he sells the property to someone who would then further develop it as an MUN, that gives us possibility of a 50-foot or a 35-foot...
Oh, total building, sure.
Based on residential or commercial.
Mm-hmm.
And since that's such a small site...
Yeah.
I'm wondering, would the site limit the possibilities?
Likely, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you would need to fit parking in there. I mean, so all of the standards in the Mixed Use Code apply, so we would make sure they have the minimum parking requirements and all that. So, yeah, on a site this size, I would say a five-story office building, for example, is probably unlikely, because you just won't be able to fit the parking on there.
Right. 35-foot residential requires a one and a half per acre, or, no. What's the requirement on residential for parking?
For parking? I believe it's a minimum of one per unit...
Per unit.
And a maximum of three?
Maximum of two and a half.
Two and a half.
Okay.
In the mixed-use zone district.
Yeah, it'd be pretty limited by, just by the size of the lot, how much you can actually fit on there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow on on that, not that that's likely to happen on this property, but just thinking down the road, would it be possible on a smaller lot that's zoned MUN to put all the parking underneath it, say, in a underground garage or an above-level garage even? Or is that not?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, yeah.
So that'd be all right, and, so that might be one way of getting a narrower or smaller lot, maybe to accommodate...
Sure, yeah.
It'd be a really expensive way to do it, but...
Right, yeah. And we do have standards regarding, so the Mixed Use Code contemplates parking garages. I don't think our regular code does. So there are standards where it butts, you know, residential and things like that. So potentially, yes, they could do it that way. If they put it underneath the building, it's still, it wouldn't then give them 50 feet or 35 feet from, you know, the fourth floor of the parking garage, you know, that, that would be the height of the building.
Sure.
What's that?
I think it was, I think it was, there's a house there, you know, in the back of the lot. We allow, so, stack housing for us.
Mm-hmm. With a 35-foot height maximum, yeah.
Yes, we just...
Yeah.
Forty-eight and what?
Yeah.
That's right. All right. All right, any other questions or discussion? Okay, then I'll entertain motion, please.
I move to recommend approval of case number WZ-18-14, a request for approval of a zone change from Commercial One to Mixed Use Neighborhood for property located at 6701 West 44th Avenue for the following reasons. The proposed zone change will promote the public health, safety, or welfare of the community, and does not result in an adverse effect on the surrounding area. Utility infrastructure adequately surfaces the property. The proposed zone change is consistent with the goals and objectives of the city's comprehensive plan and consistent with the character of 44th Avenue. The zone change will provide additional opportunity for reinvestment in the area, and the criteria used to evaluate a zone change support the request.
Do we have a second? Okay. Any further discussion?
I do.
Sorry, I forgot to ask Zach one question. If this is approved as an MUN, there's more landscaping that needs to be done by the current owner. I assume what's there isn't quite the landscape requirement.
Um, you know, I don't know that if that's been addressed, assessed. I know when I was looking through the old permit records, it met whatever requirements were in place in 1988 when it rezoned, or when it rezoned to what it is now, the Commercial One.
Mm-hmm.
And we would not impose the new landscaping standards unless they redeveloped the property.
Okay.
Or did like a major, some form of major investment in the property.
You'd have to, you'd have to modify or expand a lot, like 50% of the building envelope or something...
Yeah, I think it's 60%, but, yeah, yep.
Be nice if there were more landscaping there.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no other discussion, I'll call for a vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right. Thank you for that, everybody. Any old business? Any new business? All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Let's adjourn.
Have a second? All right, let's vote. Everybody vote, otherwise we can't leave. All right.
Motion pass, six to zero.
Great, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.